Good evening, Council. My take is a whole lot different than everybody else's this evening. This area was set up by the federal government as an entitlement area. I don't care what you name this place, because the naming of something is the way that a person, group, or city, state feels. And we see how the city of Tulsa feels about black people. We see it. Because as you look at Brady, then you look at Greenwood, and see the misuse of what's supposed to happen in that area. This area was set up by the federal government for black people, for the use of black people. When you come, I'm free now. We can get together, Mr. Henderson, you, and whoever else wants to come, and I can show you this.
You're still wanting to take me to lunch, aren't you?
No, you're taking me to lunch.
Oh, okay.
I prefer, yeah, you're paying for all of them.
I would just go.
Yeah, Lincoln's picking up the tab, that's...
It's been a laces.
Okay, now, back on something very serious to me. When I look at what the federal government had set up, and how the city of Tulsa had used what the federal government had set up for the use of black people because of the way black people are treated in the United States, I feel a problem. And every sober-thinking black person should feel the same way. Because what has happened is, the growth of Brady Heights and the growth of Greenwood are totally on a different path. I'll go into this later, but, come to think of it, I think the name Brady should be placed in a textbook, and removed from the street, and the whole Brady District removed. Any questions? Thank you very much.
I have a question, if I may. What would you call it?
Hmm, I'd call it Greenwood. The whole area is Greenwood. No, the whole area, including from Lansing all the way to Osage County Line.
Greetings to our esteemed council members. My name is Kenny Williams, and I am vice president of our Honesty Society of McLean High School. I am right there in my graduating class. I represent the Youth for Tulsa Coalition for Social Justice. We are demanding, and, we are demanding the kind of change that will create an environment of true inclusiveness beyond just an idea. One that represents a sincere desire for reconciliation in a city scarred by its ongoing continuation of ignorance regarding the complete history of Tate Brady as a Klansman, as well as known as a terrorist who participated and promoted the worst domestic act of terrorism on American soil, historically known as Tulsa Race Riot. This attempt to hide Tulsa's shame behind bright lights, historic neighborhoods, and modern art has failed because racist attitudes perpetuated can no longer depend on the literacy of socially disadvantaged, of the socially disadvantaged. On February 6th, 2013, the city of Memphis passed a resolution to immediately rename Confederate Park and Jefferson Davis Park in downtown Memphis and Nathan Bedford Forest Park, which lies just a few miles away. The vote was nine to zero. Nathan Forrest, a Confederate general and cavalry leader, was a slave trader before the war, and the KKK is first green wizard. He also is accused of massacring dozens of black Union soldiers who tried to surrender at the Battle of Fort Pillow in 1864. Sixty-four, sorry. Please note that this was just an accusation. We are not accusing Tate Brady of anything. We are just stating documented facts. Also note that Nathan Bedford II and Wyatt Tate Brady were close comrades and the sons of Confederacy, as well as being KKK brothers. The only obvious difference between the council in Memphis and the city council here is that Tulsa's council is predominantly white and Memphis is predominantly black. This is your chance to prove that color really doesn't matter by doing what is socially right. I make a recommendation that council change the name of Brady Street to a name that reflects reconciliation and unity in Tulsa. We thank you for your time and trust that you've not let my generation down the way our foreparents, who are denying reparations, have been let down. Any step towards changing Tulsa's tainted history is a good step. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Mr. Bynum, in particular, for ensuring that this would get on the agenda. Thank council Jack Henderson. Since the beginning of this campaign to rename Brady, we've been hit with a barrage of privileged-based perspectives that directly reflect what can best be described as cognitive dissonance. Allow me to explain how it works. When people are in an uncomfortable situation, their minds rationalize by inventing comfortable illusions. For example, some have stated, "What would they ask for next? Next they'll be demanding that the name of the Washington Memorial be changed, after all he owned slaves." You would be surprised how many so-called intelligent-minded people have expressed that sentiment. Now, allow me to provide reason why this comparison to Tate Brady lacks intelligence. Despite being immoral, the ownership of slaves was illegal in the United States of America. Tate Brady's Klan activities were not. George Washington also condemned the act of tarring and feathering during the Whiskey Rebellion, an act which Tate Brady not only participated in, but ordered against fellow white citizens. George Washington was never a member of the KKK. Tate Brady was. In fact, the US government enacted the Enforcement Act of 1871, also known as the KKK Act, to ensure the protection of its citizens from crimes and acts of terror. It has also been stated, "Why can't you people just get over it? I mean, we weren't even alive when it happened, and we can't change the past." Parts of North Tulsa look like the destruction of 1921 happened just ten years ago. Anyone who seriously suffers from cognitive dissonance would fail to see how the past and the present connect. Have you ever visited a Jewish Holocaust, anybody? Holocaust museum? Great. Can you imagine telling Jewish people to forget what happened to their foreparents? It is, it's not even conceivable. Why did Jews bring this up year after year? And it's so decisive, it's so divisive. You'll never hear anybody utter those types of statements, except the KKK. Most would agree with my statements, but follow, but, yes, but look at them. They've moved on in their highly productive people collectively. I could not agree more. They moved on because the whole world helped hunt down the perpetrators so that justice would be served. Not here. We actually honored those who committed evil acts. They moved on because they ensured themselves that the whole world would never forget what happened to them. Tulsa, however, perfected the art of hiding history and to this day refuses to amend the past, dark past of Tate Brady. The pioneers of Greenwood had already suffered generationally hundreds of years of chattel slavery, same slave codes, and for some, the Trail of Tears, and people still say, "Just get over it." Next there were Jim Crow laws from 1876 to 1965. They still say, "Get over it. It's in the past." During the period of lynching of African-Americans, that rose to an all-time high and did not decrease until the 1960s. Get over it. It's all in the past. This was followed by multiple assassinations and the murder of both black and white civil rights activists. J. Edgar Hoover's counterintelligence programs that lasted from 1956 to 1975 devastated our community as attempts to create future leaders would be severely paralyzed by fear and intimidation. Of course, that was a long time ago. We should get over it. Just let it all go. I could go on, but the point I'm making here is that, when you become a victim of such large-scale violence, it's difficult to overcome the scar of that kind of past. And in our attempts to repair, it's been, time after time, it's been voided by, "Get over it. It's all in the past," or "The statute of limitations has passed." Something has always passed. Something, there's always an excuse. There's always a sign of cognitive dissonance. Now, whether it's just pure ignorance or cognitive dissonance, some say that this is a black issue. It's not. It's a human issue. Some have asked me, "With all the problems in North Tulsa, why is this a focus?" Not one person who criticizes this effort has put into place a viable community-sustaining solution beneficial to North Tulsa. And if they did, the Greenwood District, or what's left of it, would be as vibrant as what is now the Brady Arts District. Changing the Brady name is good for all people, not just black people, as some might suggest. For all those who feel that changing the Brady name will destroy the history, I would like to quote two historic figures. The great writer George Orwell stated, "The most effective way to destroy people is to deny and obliterate their own understanding of their history." It is fair to say that hiding the legacy of old Greenwood was successful. Napoleon Bonaparte stated, "History is a set of lies agreed upon." And we have discovered what the lies are. The truth is about history. The truth can be put in history. And if you truly want to keep the history of Tate Brady alive, then talk to Bob Blackburn at the Oklahoma Historical Society and assure that the entire history of Tate Brady is amended. We implore you to consider a vote to change the name of Brady Street. Then a committee that will change the name, that will make Tulsa look like an inclusive city, look like the kind of place you want to visit. Thank you.
Of that 1921 massacre, what just a race riot was a massacre. And it's very emotionally close to me, because my grandmother just passed away last year. She was 105. And as I spoke and said the last time we talked, she said the right thing. It's not a black issue. It's not a white issue. It's a right issue. It's just the right thing to do. No, you're not, council, you're a black. But it shouldn't affect you, just like it affects me. It really shouldn't. Because it's a right issue. One thing that I've noticed, living in this city, and I've lived here 50 years, one thing that I've noticed is this. Caucasian people, most generally, stick together in right and in wrong. And as you all will look and see, it's not just black folk that are asking that this name be changed. There are Caucasian people that are here that share our slave sentiments. Because it's wrong. It's just wrong. And most generally, black folk usually don't stick together. Let me say that. We most generally don't stick together. But you all do, that are Caucasian. And when you see black folk and white folk coming together on a common cause and saying that it's wrong, you nine councilors should see what we see. Because it's just wrong. And you have the opportunity. Because you all said last meeting that you didn't have the power. But I believe if you all check the bylaws, and you all say your council attorney is here, but if you all check the bylaws, I believe you do have the power to make a wrong right. Thank you. Very long, because I think everybody's pretty much said what I've felt. They did, they did. But I'd like to implore you all to listen to the will of the people. There's a lot of people here that like to keep history as it is, as it remains, but we need to also recognize there's been a history that's been forgotten. The earlier speaker talked about, "History was just a lie agreed upon." Well, somebody lied about Tulsa, because they would have included somewhere in this city the name of Josiah Perriman, the founder of Tulsa Town, yet there's nothing in the city named after him whatsoever. So, when you get to a chance to have an open mind, an open heart, let, as this debate goes on about the renaming of Brady, let these children come together, come up with a name, let the people who had the businesses in the Brady District come up with a name, let the people who have issues with it come up with a name, and then get back with you. Because I think that's the right thing to do. Instead of digging our feet into the ground and further make an incident that happened so many years ago come back to fruition as if it would happen.
Mike Workman, Act Two. My friend said it might be a hard act to follow after last week I did enjoy myself more than I ever was entitled to, but I give you tonight the extended version of the Brady Funeral Friends, Tulsans, country persons, lend me your hearts. I come to bury W.T. Brady, not to praise him. The evil that men do lives after them. The good is often enterrant with their bones. Let it be so with Brady. The noble Brady Arts District hath told you that Brady is just a street name. If it were so, it was a grievous fault, and grievously has Tulsa answered it. Here, under the leave of the Tulsa City Council, the rest, for Brady was an honorable man. So were many streets named, all after honorable persons and cities. Come I now to speak in Brady's funeral. He was once a friend, faithful and just to Tulsa, but now others say Brady was a Klansman and Brady was an honorable man. The Brady Arts District has brought many dollars home to Tulsa, whose taxes did the General Cofords fill. Did this in Tulsa seem appropriate? When did the artists have cried? Tulsa hath wept. Street names should be made of sterner stuff. Yet others now say Brady was a Klansman and Brady was an honorable man. You all did this see in this council chamber. I once presented you nine alternatives, which you did not yet act upon. Was this responsive? Yet others now say Brady was a Klansman, and sure, he was an honorable man. I speak not to disprove what Brady did, but I, here, am to speak what I do know now. Tulsa did name a street after him once, not without cause. What cause compels you then to still show honor for him? Oh judgment, thou art fled to brudy's beasts, and the Brady Arts District hath lost their moral compass. Bear with me. My heart is on the street sign there with Brady. And I must pause till it comes back to me. Now, obviously satire, sarcism, and parody are a good way to make a point. And if you're going to crib a quote, crib from Shakespeare. If you would show the first graphic, also the best way to make a point, as I showed you last week, the Michael Christopher local artist came up with an alternative of the Brady Arts District, the Tate Brady Arts District, Sean DeKlaman, available in t-shirt. But if you'll show graphic number two, it's hard to see in this graphic here, but it's now available in a hoodie. What says Brady better than a hoodie? No, I didn't give you nine alternatives. 1899 Mayor Bynum. If you made that motion, I don't know if you get a second for Mayor Bynum Street. I gave you eight others, and they were in alphabetical order, but I knew the last one would be the most entertaining. And at the request of councilman, who's, the street relies in his district, I now give you graphic number three. The Gary Busey Arts District. You asked for it? Now, all the nine names I gave you were just conversation starters. All nine of them are flawed people. I'm flawed. We're all flawed. But each and every one of those names, including Gary Busey, is more worthy of being honored with a street name in an arts district.
Mr. Workman, you have one minute.
Again, B for Boston? No problem. B for Boulder? No problem. B for Brady? Also, we have a problem. A for Archer. B for Brady. C for Cincinnati. We've already shown we can think outside of the alphabet with Martin Luther King Boulevard. So let's think outside of the Bs. Black street won't get a second. But there are individuals who were lynched and killed before the race riot. There are victims who died in the race riot, whose names start with a B. Pick anyone at random if you want to stay with B. But if you really want to think outside the alphabet, Greenwood, Woody Guthrie, George Keifer, A, B, B, anything but Brady. And I'll leave you with the last graphic here, number four.
And your time is up.
What you leave behind is not what is written in stone, but what is woven into the lives of others.
Associated with Brady, and I told that person that the council did not have the authority to do anything about those other names. But research, and everybody knows that we can, as the council, do something about changing of the street name, because we've done it before. So, they asked me to put it on their agenda again. I want to thank Councilman Bynum for calling me up and saying that he wanted to co-sponsor this to be placed on, so people could come down, have an opportunity to voice their opinions. And we did that tonight. I'm excited about the people that came down, excited about the information they gave. This is a start. So where do we go from here? After some other councils have an opportunity to speak, I would like to come back and make a recommendation, and we'll see what we can do from there.
Counselor Bynum? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate me to co-sponsor it, and also, again, for a second week in a row, folks coming out, just making great points. Mr. Workman has referenced my great-great-grandfather a couple times, who was the mayor of Tulsa in 1899. You have the picture of old R. N. Bynum? There he is. Looks like a pleasant fellow. I, and bear with me for a second, but this has a point. I bring him up because this is, for me, approaching this whole issue has been a very personal thing. Because my great-great-grandfather came here in the 1870s with nothing. Rode here on a horse to get away from his family's farm and went to work at a mercantile store that the Hall Brothers owned. And thirty years after he moved here, he was the mayor of Tulsa. Granted, there were only 200 people here, but he was still the mayor of Tulsa. And he ran for mayor because he thought that we ought to have a public school system. We didn't have that then. And he didn't, he wanted to see the mayor of Tulsa pushing for something like that. And so he, in a group, he got elected mayor, he and a group of his friends went out and identified the area that's now the Mid-Continent Tower parking garage in the Kennedy Building, that block. It was an old series of buildings, and they purchased that and donated it to the city to be the first public school in the city of Tulsa so that kids could have an education. When he was the mayor, he pushed literacy efforts, but he did it for two years, and then he went back to serve on the city council because he accomplished what he wanted to do. I, today, am proud to have inherited the six-year that he carried when he was mayor to chase bandits out of town if they dared to come into his city. But the only person I ever knew that knew R. N. Bynum was my grandfather. And I asked him about him one time, and he had a few memories. And each of these memories had a common theme, and that is that my grandfather, when he was a baby, he'd be out playing in the front yard, and R. N. Bynum would come over, would walk over to G.T. Bynum's house, that's who I'm named after, his son, his son's house. And he'd play with my grandfather in the front yard, but he wouldn't go inside because my great-grandfather married a Catholic girl. I say this because I don't judge my great-great-grandfather for being a bigot. I love him. He was not perfect, as none of us are, and he was a product of his time, as every one of us are. And so I think that while we're talking about this, it's important that we not turn this into expecting the city council in 2013 to render judgment on Tate Brady. That's not going to happen. God did that a long time ago. The role that we have is to make sure that the people who live here today, they get to pick what their streets are named after. They're your streets, but not Tate Brady's streets. You pay for them, you maintain them, and you get to decide what they're named after. So, I support a process, and I don't know what Counselor Henderson has in mind. I know that Mr. Ross mentioned earlier, he thought that we need to have, you know, people that are impacted by this street, maybe property hunters, people in there, people that are interested, come together and talk about a different possible name. And I think that's an important conversation to have. It's one thing to just sit here and say whether or not Mr. Brady's name ought to be on a street. It's a different thing entirely to say whether or not he ought to, you know, what, whose name ought to be on that street. So I think that it's important that we start that process, that we have people decide. The people in Tulsa in 2013 decide what they want their street to be named. And if they decide that they want to change it, then that's when the city council does have a role, all nine of us in voting on it. So that's all for me. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your pardoning the venture into Bynum family genealogy research. But I think that's an important point to make. If folks are setting their expectations so high that we can judge Mr. Brady entirely for all that he did, that is not for us to do. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. I might say that, you know, changing, this type of change is going to affect a lot of people that live in that Brady area, in the Brady District. So I do think that the folks that live in that area, the folks that own businesses in that area, and all should come together to be on, whether this committee or task force or whatever, because, you know, that does financially impact, you know, the people down that district. And if they decide, you know, I will certainly support them in what they decide, what they would like for their area, they live there, you know? And with the name of the street, whatever they decide, you know, why does it have to be named after anybody? A street could be called Blue Street, you know? It doesn't have to be actually named after anybody.
There are people named Blue though.
Anyway, it's just a, just a suggestion, but I do think if we proceed forward with this, or when we proceed forward with this, I think it's very valuable to have input of the people that live and work and own businesses in the area.
Counselor Henderson?
Or Tate Brady, or the preservation of the name, or anything else. I don't see anybody refusing to address this issue head-on. I mean, I appreciate everybody being here, but know that we are, well, I don't want to speak for "we." I am open and receptive to all of this. I have a person just like everybody else in this room, who will do whatever is in the best interest of our city, for sure. I do agree with Counselor Bynum and Patrick and Henderson that this has to be a process that we go through with the cooperation of the business owners, those that will be impacted economically by any kind of change, because their addresses printed on business cards and letterhead and big signs and a whole bunch of other things that have to be changed. So, I would just encourage us to go through a logical process with the people who would be most impacted economically in that district as we collectively, hopefully, decide what the name of this area and street should be.
Go along with forming a task force or, and we could select people from each district to serve on this task force. And the reason for the task force is that this group of people would be able to go out and do the research to find out what damage, this would be like a damage control type deal. If we change the name, what's the benefit from changing the name? If we don't change the name, what's the hurt in not changing the name? And I think that if we get, each one of us can pick people to serve on that committee, and then that committee can come back to the city council and report out, you know, what the desire of the whole should be. And if they choose to change the name, then the citizens can be a part of trying to pick another name, or... I just think that the downtown area has a new face, and it's, though you've lived in Tulsa all your lives, know exactly what I'm talking about. Our downtown used to roll the sidewalks up at five o'clock, and we have gone far beyond that. We have a downtown second to none. We got businesses flourishing, we got restaurants everywhere. We got businesses flourishing, we got restaurants everywhere, clubs, hotels. I mean, this is the type of city that you want to see, this is the type of downtown you want to see in your city. And I think that we do not want to leave a name around if it's going to hurt the growth that Tulsa has already experienced. And I think that we need to pull together as a unit to make sure that we continue to change the face of Tulsa. And downtown has already proven that we can do that by the things that we have done. If the council would be not, if they would be in favor of setting, putting this back in committee, coming up with a group of people that we can all agree to say, okay, committee, go out and do your thing and find out what it is that we need to do about this. I don't think that we are set here tonight and make any decisions, but that group of people, once we pick them, can help shape what we're going to do about this name. And I think that that's a start in the right direction, because it's already came to light in CNN was here. The last thing we need to do is try to let somebody that has been dead for 85 years dictate what we end up doing in 2013. So if anybody else has any other suggestions or things that we can do, you know, we can listen to that, but if not, if you would agree to have a consensus to say that we need to form a committee and we could do that, I think that that would be moving in the right direction.
Like those representatives of the Brady Arts District and Brady Heights and anybody else that shares the name Brady, but is that part of this task force as well? Or how do you handle that?
I think that the councilman for that particular district that has more at stake than anybody at this podium here should have input on helping to select some of these people. And definitely people in his district, because we don't want to fight on anything that has came out positive for the Brady District. And, you know, the name may not be there, but the fact that we have businesses, all kinds of things in downtown that's on a positive, you know, I think that he, as well as the rest of the council, can come up with a scenario on how are we going to do it. I don't think that it's going to necessarily take shape right here tonight, but I think that if we think about it, you know, we can, we can join our forces together and come up with a way to do it.
Can I ask, somebody was talking earlier today about what the council can rename, and what the federal government has to rename, and what are all those different? We only have responsibility over the street.
The street.
And then there's the historical Brady District?
Yes. That's a Brady Neighborhood Association, historic Brady District, Brady Arts District, Brady Heights, Brady, Brady, Brady.
Some association.
But every one of those, I think, have a board of people that sat on that board to help make that go. And I think those other people that have some at stake, we had a person that come here last week, and I think he said he was representing three of those entities, and he said, "We're listening to you. We hear your cry." That meant to me that they may be amenable to be a part of trying to shape what happens here. So, you know, that's a, those are the kind of things we need to talk about.
I think that we're all talking together, going all the same direction, rather than the one group going off and meeting this way. Yeah, we want to work together rather than pulling each other apart. Okay. I'm supportive.
Counselor Henderson?
I'd first like to thank my colleagues for taking such a strong role of leadership on an issue in District Four, and I'm glad to form any of the other issues I have to deal with to you guys. If you'd like to just maybe form a line after the meeting, and I'll hand out issues to you guys to deal with. You've done a nice job with this one.
It's a pretty big investment.
I'm very in your neck of the woods. Very grateful. Also, I've been excited to see an interest in downtown from colleagues who oftentimes not share the enthusiasm for downtown that maybe I thought they should have. So that's exciting. I guess we're on the right track. I'll take any other suggestions that you guys have about how this should be handled, or if you'd like me to continue to sit here in silence while you solve this issue, I'm glad to do that as well. I would say thank you again to the people who chose to come out and spend your Thursday night with us. There are really good things on TV on Thursday night. There are, come on, Mike. And I know most of those things that you could have been doing outside of here would have, would have perhaps been more entertaining for you than this, maybe not. But really, I'd say it always means a lot to me when citizens, young and old, you know, black, white, and Chinese, choose to engage the process and share their passions and convictions with us. It makes it, you know, this job's not always fun. You know, I know it's a surprise to you, a lot of times it sucks, but to me, the good moments are these. The good moments are when we're reminded what we're doing it for, and it's when people who love their city and are passionate about their city choose to come and sit in that gallery in those quasi-comfortable chairs and, you know, make a petition to us. So thank you for that. Again, I would thank those of you who are from this Land Press for shining a light on this issue and bringing it to the point of conversation. Our community, regardless of how this goes, needs the conversation, kind of, we need the tension, we need the, we need to be dealing with this in 2013, I think. Yeah. So that's my thought. I just, at this point, I'm grateful. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't, I couldn't even guess what's going to happen. I would, I can guess. I would guess that a lot of things named Brady today won't be named Brady next year. I don't know what they will be named, I don't know what the process will look like, I don't know if it's a fight or if it's easy, but my hope is that whatever happens, and however that conversation goes, that it's a conversation that down the line we can be proud of. We've got enough issues of division and, you know, frustration between subgroups and cultures in our community. Let's not make this be another one of those things. And that's really my plea. We're going to have this conversation, which has the potential to be, you know, kind of a mess. I just hope that everyone remembers that we get to set an example today that we wish had been set for us about how to deal with things like this. So I will, I will effort however I can to recruit people together. I think that it's been made clear to me by the different groups in the downtown Brady Associations, that they're willing to have that conversation. That's, there's no question. I think you've got a very open-minded group to that. You know, we haven't talked a whole lot about Brady Heights in this. It's been largely focused on the Brady Arts District, but there's a, there's a much larger, actually, geographic area known as the Brady Heights Neighborhood that is not in my district, but that extends, you know, several miles, right? Three miles in to Counsel Henderson's district. So I ask for your patience as we figure this stuff out. I think it sounds to me like the council across the board has taken this issue up, and you shouldn't have any trouble finding elected people who are glad to be advocates for what you shared tonight. So thank you once again.
Okay. Without objections, we'll sign this back to committee for further discussion, and we're going to proceed forward on our task force or policy decided to be.
I'm happy. This seems like across the board on the whole council that they agree with us, and we just need to meet with the business owners. Three of them has already reached out to us, and we'll have a meeting with them Saturday. And I think it's going to be really good. They really, I am for the task. Mm-hmm. I am for the task. It's needed. It was shocking, because I came in not expecting much, just from dealing with the city, and I didn't want to get my hopes up, but like I told this Land Press, without anything was possible, and if we would just stick to the facts and explain to them why we feel this way, that they would agree, and I'm glad that they did.
So why do you think the change of plan?
I think they realized all the things that Tate Brady was about, and I really think this article that Leroy Chapman did with this Land Press really opened up the minds of a lot of people. And then with us just kind of just hitting them with it and keeping it in their face, and they understood. And it just shows that the city is really turning to the point of reconciliation, and it's a good start. It's a real good start.
How did you think the event went tonight?
I believe it was highly effective. Sometimes you gotta, you have to analyze people to get them to understand what's going on inside the mind, you know? When you start discussing issues like cognitive dissonance, that really hits, that really strikes you, because, you know, especially if you've never heard of it, and you start to analyze, well, maybe this is where all of this comes from. So my, the way I think is, we don't want to repeat history, and the only way we keep from repeating history is to be fully aware of what is taking place in history. That's why I wanted to, you know, speak back close with George Orwell and Napoleon Bonaparte, so that you could get some idea of how historians or people in history have viewed the idea of history. You know, like Napoleon said, "History is just a lie agreed upon." You know, so if we don't really study history or his story, we can be very deluded, and we find ourselves engaged in things that, you know, it's like, wow, you know, this is really, you know, this is, like they say at the city council, "I can't believe, you know, we didn't know about this." I mean, this is new, this is new information, and we don't, it's unfortunate that our four parents didn't teach us, you know, and that we're having to learn this information in a city council meeting. You know, I can only imagine.
Sounds like you guys were teaching them too.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you have to be informed if you're going to present information to people. I always tell people, "Don't speak on things you can't back up," you know, because then it just makes you look ridiculous, and nobody, we, you know, we come from a background of people who have been highly intellectual, highly influential, and, you know, it makes you, it makes you really understand why the demise of people like us, why, why is it such a, I mean, why is it such a global, you know, operation? You know, it's, you know, it's like, okay, the demise of these people is inevitable. We have to make sure, I mean, Tulsa World said it best in 1921, June 1st. "We must never let little Africa happen again." That's a serious statement.
I think that it's going really well. I think that everybody's receptive to creating a discussion about the name change, and they understand the voices that are being raised and the points that are being raised, why it's important. That's correct.
Do you think doing that article actually opened up their?
Yeah, it's, sure, it's interesting that we included some, some information in the article that wasn't previously published, but what's really happened is that the history of Tate Brady that was known to the North Side since, and published since 1995 has just made it a south of the tracks, so it's, it's an interesting process to watch unfold.